All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's six o'clock on Tuesday, the 20th, May 20th. And so I will ask that everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, thank you all for joining us down here in Brookings. All right, we will start with the amendments and approval of the agenda.
I would like to amend the agenda if I could.
Okay.
Under eight discussion action items. A, I would like to have a discussion regarding the Oregon State Sheriff Association presentation that I attended last Thursday.
Okay. I have a couple of amendments. We have our CAFA grant approval for the treasurer's or for the assessor's office. I would like to put that under consent if possible, if you guys are agreeable to that. And also, we have some work that needs to be done in the sheriff's office, some ductless heat pumps and head units for the sheriff's office. So I'd like to put that under consent as well. And also, on consent under C, it says approve Reese Electric quote for lights in the county shop. What I would like to do there is for us to, essentially, we can move it to discussion into item eight. The point of that is, I'd like them, the bid that we have is not current, and so what I'd like to do is set a not to exceed and make them come back and make them get three qualified bids.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. So if you, we can put that under discussion, it'll be a real quick discussion, basically what I just mentioned, but that's what I'm looking at, so.
Do you want to do that as discussion item A, and then have my discussion item as B?
Certainly. So let's move, let's move that. So A will be lights at the county shop, and B will be your discussion.
Okay.
And then we will add the ductless heat pump and head units for the sheriff's office as consent item I, and the CAFA grant approval into J in consent. Commissioner Coker, do you have any adjustments?
Nope, like what I hear. Thank you.
Okay. Then, can I have a motion to approve this amended agenda?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the amended agenda as discussed.
Second. Okay, any further discussion?
No.
All right, I'll call the question. Commissioner Coker?
I.
Commissioner Hollinger?
Yes.
And I as well. Okay. Next up is our presentation on the Curry County Coastal CNC Academy by Jeff Lage. Right? Did I say that right?
Yes.
Lage, like Paige with an L.
Yes. Well, thank you, I appreciate you for the Lord's time. Yeah, so Curry County Coastal CNC Academy. I moved up here with my wife, actually didn't plan to move up here, but we bought a retirement home in Gold Beach in 2013. And then in 2020, at the time I was working as the president of developing technology for advanced manufacturing. So my job was to go around the world, places like Fanuc and other already Cewa machine tool builders, and bring the latest technology back to our 26 offices here. So in 2020, I got a call from our CEO, and he said, yeah, we're not flying anymore, so you need to get behind your desk and do some presentations. That didn't seem like too much fun, and later that year, our house burned down in Gold Beach. And during COVID, it was a vacation home, but when COVID started, we decided to move up. And it went from this place that we were retired to, to a place that we could uplive at full time. So after that point, I spent some time working on that property, and with COVID, the price of lumber and the price of getting a contract and the ability to get a contractor were just, you know, beyond the limit of what these terms can be paid. So we were fortunate enough to get out to our neighbor's house that found our house and called us when we were at a family that burned down. And so we worked on that for the last couple of years, and last year, I flipped a house. And after being in manufacturing for 40 years and working at some really great companies and building some really great companies, my wife and I recently, we were on vacation for 30 days on this incredible cruise, and because of a manufacturing guy, I always get up at like four in the morning. So I'm up at four in the morning, watching the news, I'm listening to the trade wars, I'm listening to, you know, all the insourcing of manufacturing in the U.S., and I'm looking back at Gold Beach and Curry County, and I'm just saying, wow, you know, we've lived here long enough, we see the challenges with the economy, we see the challenges, we see our friends' kids move away, and maybe they come back, maybe they don't. And so I just started thinking, you know, this is really the time to do something where I can give back and put something in the community where we can start to drive manufacturing. So that's a little note of it, and then I've got a couple of slides we can, I can go through here.
Okay.
So I think put together two. So in school, I kind of struggled growing up, single mom, I grew up next to some Hell's Angels down in Canova Park, and I didn't really do well in academics. I did pretty good in shop and band and things like that. And so I was, you know, the D student, and when I turned 18, I was walking home, and I stopped off to see my neighbor Terry the biker, and he asked me what I was going to do. And I told him I was going to go to the Air Force and play in the band, and he said, yeah, you're not going to make it, they're going to kick you out. You know, you just picked up the paper and said, you need to go work in a machine shop, that's a good job for you. So the next day, I started working at a machine shop, being a tool diver, $3 an hour, and looking for me about eight years later, working for Don Lapinavik at Chatsworth, and that's a NASA HVAC part that I made for the space shuttle. 10 years later, I was running that company, and then over the last 35 years, I built two large companies in advanced manufacturing and just the latest technology, five-axis CNC. And that's kind of where this idea all started. I was, if I ran across kids I went to school with, and they were like, you doing what? You? And so it was a really rewarding career for me, and it's something that I think, if I look around, we could see the economic development and the benefits of that in concert with everything that's happening in our United States today. So with that, I've got a few slides. So I talked a little bit about Four C Academy. I call it Curry County Coastal CNC Academy. That was my inspiration, but Four C is kind of the short version of it, right? So let me go to the next slide. So the whole idea is to create a sustainable living wage, career opportunities right here. We all know it's tough for young people to find a real career here, I mean, there's plenty of good jobs, especially more in Brookings than there is in Gold Beach and Port Orford. But a lot of those jobs will turn into, you know, livable wages, and they'll turn into benefits in a 401K and things like that, right? So that's what I'm trying to effect is putting together an advanced manufacturing academy that not only has CNC machining as the base, but then advanced manufacturing, so they can, you know, kind of go through the ranks from basically working at the high school level, middle school level, and the shop classes, and working with those folks, and then moving into maybe SWAC, and then the academy, and start doing the basic stuff. And then the academy would also run kind of an incubator where it can work with local community to build like with the sporting store, you know, Sam and Reels, you know, CNC machine Sam and Reels, that they can sell on market, and that would help, you know, drive, you know, the learning curve and the learning path for people, and ultimately go to a profit manufacturing company. When I introduced this down at Gold Beach City Hall, it was actually a gentleman who's the owner of a company that makes a machine tool called Omni-Turn in Port Orford. And they've been there for 25 years, and they're getting ready to figure out what they need to do, move or do something else, because all their employees came with them when they moved here 25 years ago, and they're all retiring. So they're not finding the skilled, trained people that can get in there. Advantech is the second largest employer in Gold Beach, and they've got 85 employees there, and it's very difficult for them to find people, they just basically have to grow them, right? So the skills just aren't being taught at schools anymore, and that's kind of where the whole thing starts. So when we look at some of the data, the next slide, please. So especially in Gold Beach, but I see the same thing here when we look at census data. In 1986, the mill closed, and from at that time, the mill employed about 354 people, so about 1 in 4 people was working there. And the demographics for people under 18, so i.e. families, is about 24%. 20 years later, 2020, the same number is 13%. Now we're at 2025, so we're probably closer to 10%. And we're really watching, you know, an outmigration of young people, you know, trying to find a living wage. And today, the next slide, you know, we're seeing a lot of tourism, which is great, but it doesn't necessarily always drive, you know, from business or it may be good for the right business owners to provide, you know, benefits and, you know, retirement plan and things like that, that's awesome, but it's also seasonal, you know, especially up in Gold Beach, we see, you know, restaurants close during the winter time, and people working two or three jobs, trying to, you know, make it at the grocery store, right? So I'm really trying to help people find a career path, and even if they do move, you know, to maybe, you know, someplace close by, there's manufacturing, but the goal would be ultimately to incubate that and bring more manufacturing, and not develop it in Curry County. So, yeah, right now, I mean, to live up here, and everybody knows, you know, a house to move up here or grow up and get married, when I live somewhere, you're going to spend $1,500, $2,000 a month. You have a couple of cars, you know, to get the kids to school and go to work, you're looking at $85,000, $90,000 a year between, you know, a two and a family, and that's just not really achievable for many people. Certainly, there's places, you know, like with the state, the county, and the hospital, and some people make that, but a lot of people are like me, you know, in school, they didn't really achieve over there, but that doesn't mean that they're not aptitude and skill to do something else, right? And that's what I'm really trying to do, is open up that avenue for those that want to do something else. Or veterans, people on their second career. With COVID, there was a lot of people just like me, and younger, you know, in school, that was just displaced, you know, they missed their senior year, they missed the opportunity to go to college, and they're kind of missing the quagmire right now, trying to figure out what to do, whether working at the K's or Fred Meyer or something like that. So, yeah, I think, going to the next slide. Yeah, so that's the whole idea, is just keeping the kids here, you know, setting up the center of excellence, state-of-the-art manufacturing hub, and basic, you know, certification, moving to apprenticeship and career. I'll tell you, you know, most of the stuff's all up here because it's in here, right? So these slides aren't really needed, especially since we came back in March, and I think on the second day, I reached on the phone to call, you know, people like Commissioner Trost, and by the fourth day, I had the nonprofit set up, right? So I've got hundreds of hours into this, I've been up to the Capitol here and met with Senator David Brock Smith, and went ahead and also stopped and saw Representative Ford and loads of other people, and I've been working with great people like Jill Telbead here from SWAC tonight. So really, what I'm looking for now is to take it to the next level, right? And that's what happens through, of course, I need a piece of property, and I see there's a nice piece of property over there at that airport, right? So I need to figure that out. I'm currently applying for grants with the government, or we'll see if we can still get it in this year, and this year's appropriations, but I've got a package that's going up there this week, actually, it's going to go up there tomorrow. So that can help cover some of it. Other funds will come from places like the Department of Defense, they've got a nice research and development grant for reverse engineering, which is part of the goal for the academy. And then local, you know, community, you know, there's a variety of things through Oregon and up and down, you know, the coast, but it all kind of comes from community, it comes from support from, you know, folks like you guys, people from the community and all the schools, and that's kind of where I'm at now, I need to, you know, so you can get more support. I've got a Facebook page opened up, you know, Curry County Coastal CNC Academy, you can find it out there, I'll leave some flyers out over here. But all that stuff, right now, I can't post a live video until I get 100 followers, little silly things like that, right? But ultimately, it's letters of recommendation and support from the board and from the local schools, and from, you know, not only Gold Beach, but from Brookings, Port Orford, and the entire county.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you, Jeff. So some background, I was fortunate enough to be the one meandering the hallways when Jeff walked in and was looking for some, you know, he had this idea, and he really wanted to put this idea to task, and we were able to introduce him to Miranda, who was able to introduce him to the director over here at SWAC, and I think a lot of really interesting and dynamic relationships have been starting to forge. And then on top of that, you've actually been putting in the work, which, you know, great ideas, they all, they come and go, but yours has, yours has sticking power and a lot of community support that really wants to see this happen. When you talk about increasing manufacturing in rural counties and couple that with youth voc tech and high-paid wage jobs, that's what builds, that's what builds our community. I mean, a lot of people don't really understand, manufacturing is the hub, is the hub of our community. Right now, South Coast in our community here, between that and the fishing industry, is truly the hub. Every manufacturing job creates six to eight other community jobs that are here to support that manufacturing. And that's, I mean, that's the heartbeat of what we have. And to have an opportunity for somebody who's knowledgeable, driven, and capable, such as yourself, I think that we, as community leaders, owe it to you and to the community to try to remove as many obstacles as possible to make this happen. And that's, I mean, it's just, that's how I feel.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Do you have a proposed location of where you would like to have this set up?
I've been looking around, a number of people have mentioned that there's some property possibly that might be available, that I think the county owned one time, and gifted it to the city or sold it to the city, that's up at the airport. That would be a nice area. I mean, ultimately, what we're looking for is something, create an enterprise or a hub, if you will, that we can attract additional businesses and more businesses over there. You know, with the example of Port Orford, that manufacturing company up there, if they were to move out of state, move that base, but if we could attract them to someplace like that, they could be a natural extension to the academy.
Yeah. So if I understood this correctly, you would want to start with middle school and high school and with SWAC as maybe some apprenticeship or training and certification classes, but then, once they've graduated from the community college or even from high school, would there be, as part of that hub, a full-time employment?
A manufacturing site?
Manufacturing site?
Yeah, so that's the idea, so, kind of like that, right? So after middle school, and maybe even an elementary school, through STEM and stuff like that, there might be like, let's say, a manufacturing deal, where they come to the, to the center to just go and see what manufacturing's all about, right? At the high school, that will be where they can start to maybe gather some skills. Unfortunately, most of the high schools right now, from my awareness, don't have, you know, any kind of real machinery. If they do, it's kind of like that treadmill in the garage, it's got some clothes hanging on, or it's not really utilized. So I've offered Gold Beach, I'm yet to meet with Brookings High School, it's, you know, it's the end of, you know, school year, so it's kind of a crazy time for everyone. But also, there's a lot of resources available today online, right? So a combination of that, you know, talking with Dean Telbead, you know, the opportunity to do online classes, we toured her location there, she's got two classrooms that seem to be adequate for the training side, right? So the boots on the ground starts with the academy, and that would be, you know, okay, you know, I learned how to design, I'm going to kind of do a little bit of CAD in the simple part, right? And then those that really want to continue forward would end up going kind of in that incubator, and this is where I look for grants from Department of Defense, you know, the Department of Defense and other, you know, Congress like that, where now we can take old processes like castings and forging, which is a current need for DoD and for a couple of other agencies, where we learn laser scanning, and then reverse engineering, and then manufacturing on higher, you know, level machines, right? And that starts to move into the journeyman apprenticeship side, right? And then ultimately, we want that for-profit company, and we want a house, not only, you know, machinist, but we want a house, all the different, you know, aspects of a manufacturing company today, from contracts, production control, and all the different avenues in there, and just like, well, that's how they do the apprenticeship, it's like anyplace else, kind of work themselves to do there, right?
Yeah.
So right now, what I'm trying to do is get the funds and funding to put a building and to get that stuff started.
Yeah.
And because of my ability, you know, and just the networking that I've done for 40-plus years in this manufacturing industry, and the last three years in that, you know, international role, I mean, a lot of what I did was show up to large machine tool shows and trade shows, and on Friday, I'd have, you know, different vendors, machine tool suppliers, equipment suppliers, and on, you know, a few days later, we'd have the stuff going. So throughout my career, I built a number of companies and had, you know, critical things, aircraft on ground, military obligations, where we had to put a plant together, produce a cell to produce parts in a very quick time, right? So this side over here is not my forte, right? But making it happen on the other side, so if I can get the funds, the property, and the support, then I can put it together very quickly, you know? The dean was telling me, well, we got this property over here in five years, and I'm saying, yeah, what can we use right now? What can I have right now?
Well, I can really see several current local employers or small businesses here, whether they're Advantech, which was formerly Freeman Marine.
Right.
Or you have several boat manufacturers, you know, whether it's in the Rogue Valley or there's a couple in Curry County. So I could see even having some sort of partnership with them as well, because a lot of the parts that can be cut and designed with the CNC have to be attached to an assembly. So I could see, you know, welding being a pretty critical part to your hub as well.
Exactly, yeah.
So there's a lot of room to not do just what you want to do, but put growth into some other trades as part of it as well, so.
Well, and you bring up a really good point with Advantech, because they're quite a unique company, where they've got clean sand castings that go into then, of course, producing parts, and there's a lot of hand finishing, right?
Yes.
So it's amazing what they do there, but, you know, sand casting goes back over 2,000 years, right? And today, with the advancements in machining and advanced machining, five-axis machining, we can take a block of material, never make a tool like that, hold it on a universal fixture, and make a boat part in a matter of a couple of hours, where they're still, you know, four weeks away to make the tool, and then prove the tool out, and then have some guy sand it, right?
Sure.
So we have the ability to help them and things like that. And I've toured their facility a couple times now, met Ron Dean, it's a great place and great employer, so, yeah, I think we could really help those guys grow and really, you know, take advantage of some of the latest technology that's out there today.
I think this is great.
Yeah, it is.
What a cool.
So I did have, I wanted to raise the, first of all, I want to be very encouraging, because I think your timing is excellent in terms of the reindustrialization of the United States and the implications that that has for communities like ours. But you also touched upon something that's endemic to South Coast, Oregon, and that is that we're losing our youth, people are moving out, and you touched on a couple of the issues. One of the issues, though, that we need to recognize, especially as we think about repopulating this area, is that people are leaving because there isn't the housing, the affordable housing, the workforce housing. And with that in mind, one or two big contracts, you're going to leapfrog, and being, and those contracts will be a magnet attracting people to come here, and I think we need to work hand in glove with you so that we have a sense of, you know, is it year one, two, or three, whatever, when you're going to bring in 20 people into the community, and we're a community that generally has maybe 10 or 15 houses max that are going to trade for workforce housing. So we have to have our fingers on the pulse relative to what your requirements are. So just throw that out as a caution and an area for us to work together.
That's a great point, and as a matter of fact, I was talking to Jude Hodge, she worked for her yesterday, and she shared the same concern. Yet, you know, there's two sides to that point, I mean, certainly, that's a given, something that's needed, right? However, if people are making a wage at, you know, $20 an hour, $2,000, $80 a year, they're making $40,000, if people doing that are making $80, so they might be able to afford something. I can't change affordability, right?
Right.
But also, the folks that do end up moving somewhere, we can give them the skills right here so they're not going to work, you know, I was at the dentist up in Vannan today, and I knew his son, because he did some landscaping and stuff like that, so he wanted to move out of town so he could make money. So he's up in Kusvee doing landscaping on his own, right? So he didn't leave with the skill, right? And so even if that migration takes place, it could take place for a very valuable skill that pays a very high wage. I was doing consulting up in Washington this week at a manufacturing company that's looking for people that, you know, people with two to five-year experience at $30 an hour range at Nastree, you know, you're hitting $100,000 plus depending on your aptitude and skillset, right? So, I mean, I did graduate high school, but I never, you know, attended college, I've done a lot of training, I believe in lifelong learning, and I've earned a very good salary, and I've been able to take very good care of my family in manufacturing, right? So, yeah, so we do need to do that, and the dean also spoke about that, I think there's some property and some planets, but those things might be some ways off, but I don't think that should stand in the way of finding a way to help, you know, young people, people that are displaced, people looking for a second career, to emphasize, you know, like you say, what's taking place right here, which is really unique right now with manufacturing, and there's a great opportunity. So I think the timing's right, and, you know, five, 10 years from now, I'll probably go fishing or something like that.
Well, I just want to say, I assist a good friend of mine in designing fishing rods. I would love the opportunity to work with you in designing some fishing reels to go with them.
And Jim up at Rube Outdoor wants to sell them.
Perfect. Well, I think we could put that together for you.
Great.
Real quick, Director, did you want to, did you want to speak at all? I know you're here probably for this presentation, I'm assuming.
Well, I just was, I'm here for support, and I will say that the college in its
Can you, can you come up here so they can hear you?
So the college in the next five years is looking to expand our footprint and develop a, some sort of flexible CTE multi-trades training-type center. Again, it's in our five-year plan, and I know Jeff is going to work tomorrow, so hopefully we can sync up some synergy. But one of the things that I talked to Jeff about and that I'm impressed, so I've been in this community for about three years, and we have our academic program down, we have our flagship nursing program, we have our transfer degrees and our AA degrees. So we've got that pretty well covered, whether I'm offering all the classes here, some of the classes here, some online, but we don't have any CTE, and part of what I've been asking the city council, county commissioners, is what is our workforce? Do you guys want me to do workforce, but what is it? You know, we've got the mill, we've got fisheries. I can't really teach that, you know? What do you want me to do? And I just see this kind of hemmed in by the fact that we're remote, we're difficult to get here, it's difficult to get supplies here and supply chain this. I mean, we run out of gas on a holiday, you know? So I can't imagine running a business where you're relying on importing materials, but when I talked with Jeff about this, he said the things that we manufacture are fairly small, or, I mean, not huge, not like the size of a boat.
Well, like fishing reels are a good example, and for one company I worked with for 25 years, I mean, the bulk of what was shipped, we shipped parts this big, which were expensive parts, anywhere from $1,000 to $2,000, and generally, it's FOV destination, so the customer's paying to have it shipped. And, you know, companies like Woodward, Parkerham, and Boeing, they're generally paying for shipment from anywhere around the United States where their facility is. Our cost of shipment here is about 10 to 12% more for UPS, but that's without a contract, right? So there are hubs, I mean, we do have a community up and down the 101, and there's trucks rolling up and down there, I will say, yes, it does cost a little bit more, but, you know, it's like anything else, if the desire is there, I see the need, right? So if I can get everybody on board with a desire and start putting the tools in place, then I can make that happen.
Yeah, so my point, what I said, that's right, that there isn't a huge amount of materials that are going to be needed to be shipped here. I mean, obviously, you need the raw materials, but the shipping in and out, the storage, even the space to do the work isn't, you know, like a
Overbearing.
Yes.
Yes.
That's a good word. So that, so I just wanted to, you know, lend my support and really, you know, share, you know, I've been thinking about workforce and what can we do, how can we expand, because bringing new employers here or big factories, that doesn't really fit with, I think, who we are as a community and how we see ourselves as a pristine community and wanting to stay that way. You could You could have little gems of manufacturing dotted throughout the mountain.
Certainly.
Yes.
So I sit on the board for the Port of Gold Beach as well, and we're currently working with the gentleman who we just signed leases with, and he's in the process of rebuilding a lot of hangars down there at the Gold Beach Airport with the intent of doing a flight school and a flight Hans. So you know Hans?
Yes.
And doing a mechanic school there as well for helicopters, for small planes, and for small jets. And he's also wanting to do, at some point, probably a partnership with SWAC as well for an extended education program as well. So I'm glad you know who I'm talking about, because I think he would be an advantageous partner for you in this as well, because he's starting to get his project going right now as well.
Yeah, there's definitely some interviews there.
Yeah.
And also, to the dean's note, if you look at Advantech, I mean, they make large doors for, you know, ships everywhere, right?
Yeah.
We heard the president talking about, you know, bringing back shipbuilding. We've got Fort Wall up there, up north, right? So I think there's other things that are going to come to our area, to Curry County in general, that are going to drive manufacturing as well. There's huge projects going on up in Boose County, you know, with the construction that's going to take place there. I was talking with the senator about, you know, the number of bolts, just giant things that have to be made, right? So, yeah, there's a lot of good things out there.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, and if there's anything that we can continue to do to further support your mission, we're happy to...
Let us know more help, right? We've got a little room behind me, trying to find some property, yeah.
Yeah, we'll continue.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're just, it's just starting.
I'll put some flyers over there, but anybody who wants to grab one.
And can you say your Facebook page again, so we can try to get you to those hundred followers, so you can start...
Yeah, it's Curry County Coastal CNC Academy, and I'll put some flyers out here like that. And I'm also looking right now for people that are retired, maybe working manufacturing, machining, or various trades, that want to maybe get involved and help be part of, you know, the processes that move forward.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, that was, thank you. That was great. Okay, next up, we have public comments. I will read this public comment disclaimer. The public comment section of the agenda is an item designated for any member of the public who wishes to speak on any issue related to Curry County. Please be advised that comments that are made to these, by these individuals reflect their personal opinions, have not been verified factually. Comments directed towards county personnel will not be tolerated in this forum. We encourage anyone with personnel-related concerns to address them privately with any of us after the meeting. And first up is Mr. Bay. And you are not solo. There are solos. So you are good.
So with your notice you gave, I can't talk about the director of operations?
No, but you can meet with me afterwards to discuss any of your concerns.
So could I discuss a pattern I've noticed in the meetings?
In the meetings? About commissioners?
That would coincide with county director of operations?
Well, if you can direct it towards us and just give us feedback.
Okay, that's fair. Okay, I just had a couple things you could perhaps cover in your commissioner comments. If not, the timber receipts, you know, I'm going to be out to those every meeting I come. And I understand we got our one million dollars last week?
Close, really close to.
Okay, and I was curious what those funds are going to be used for, if they're dedicated or going to the general fund. What would be expecting more? How is that working out? Is this a one-time offer? And the second rabbit hole went down was the, I've noticed in the meetings, the lack of our director of operations, especially in the annex building. And it kind of seemed odd, we had executive sessions down here, and I don't see the director there. So I went down the rabbit hole, and I saw writing on the bathroom wall in the annex building. I said, maybe Jeff's not allowed there due to a conflict of some sort.
Well, so I...
If you want to squash it now, that's fine.
I can, a hundred percent. So, number one, no, he's a hundred percent in the annex. He works in and out at all times. He obviously has oversee quite a few different areas. So no, there's no validity to that rumor. So I do want to just get that out there and squash that now. So I hope that helps.
Thank you, guys. Just to check.
And...
Can I add to that?
Certainly. But I also want to, I want to get to the forest thing, too.
Yeah. Just to add on to that as well, we had a discussion with our legal counsel slash director of county operations, and something happened earlier in the year with our previous finance director, where, when she was up here giving a report and attended a couple different meetings, it exposed her to direct attacks. And that wasn't right for us commissioners to expose our employees to that level. That's, we're supposed to receive the attacks. We're not supposed to have county employees up here being the face and the center for potential attacks. So we discussed that with them, and we left that ball in his court. If he chose to attend, he's obviously has the opportunity to have public attacks. And if he chooses not to, then he does not need to come here. But when we do have our questions and our director updates to call him in, then we can definitely do that as well, and that's the direction that he has chosen to go.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll address the other part in the comments.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. One more, David Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you for your commitment to the community, bringing in the trade. I'll thank you, like me on Facebook. Appreciate that. Happy to be back.
Next up is, we'll go ahead and let these folks get going. Thena Lyons.
My name's Thena Lyons. Do you have to give my address?
Yes, please.
Okay, 963-05-SPINDRIFT, Brookings. And I just want to say thank you for, two weeks ago, you guys were very, very gracious, letting the world talk about the resolution, and I'm for it, so...
The sanctuary?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So just go ahead and do it, you know? It's not legal, anything you can probably do, but you can make, you can take a stand. And so I just want to say I appreciate the patience that you guys had, because it was pretty long. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Thena. Next up, David Barnes. Okay? Next up, Teresa Simon.
Commissioners, Teresa Simon, I live at 98668 Monmouth Checkout, which is the backside of Social Security Bar. And we're coming up that time of year where we're going to have the camping going on. This and that, we've already had some large campfires and that type of stuff. And I'm all for everybody having a good time. And like the other day, there was a gentleman out there, and he had his little kid, and they were like on a little Honda 50 bike. And he's sitting down in the back of the bike with his kid, you know, and they're riding up the bank, and it's like, how cute. You know, and other people are out fishing or whatever, they're having a great time. But like last year, we had, we've been out, we picked up a whole dump trailer full of trash and this and that, and hauled it to the dump, trying to get it cleaned up before the waters got high to wash it all down. I mean, there was pieces of couches, and there was furniture, wodding, other stuff you don't even want to think about. I'm just hoping that, you know, we have your continued, you know, support, because it's nerve-wracking, like, and I don't call usually law enforcement, but like a month and a half ago, I called law enforcement on this kid that was out there. I mean, he was just being obnoxious and really terrible. And I get a call back from them two hours later. And I know they're busy. But what if it had been something really, you know? What if he'd gotten hurt out there doing something stupid? You know, I mean, that's all, we don't want people hurt, we don't want it torn up, we don't want the trash. You know, it's bad enough when you go down north, there's trailers and trailers and trailers. I mean, how do we combat this?
And I'll try to address some of those things in commissioner comments as well.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, it's a very, this is a decades-long issue, and so I totally understand the gravity of it. So, yeah, I'll address some of that as the best I can during the commissioner comments.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, well, we are there at commissioner comments. You can, you can sit down, because it's not, it won't be dialogue. I'll just address what I know and what I can share.
Okay.
Obviously, I'll start with the issues at Social Security Bar. So last week, DSL, the Department of State Lands, was out, and they met with Director Fitzgerald down at the bar. And there was, from what I understand, there was some really good, healthy discussion about how to, some potential ideas about moving forward. I was also informed that the OSP Lieutenant Spiny has officially handed over responsibility in terms of enforcement responsibility over to Sheriff Ward. So we are, you know, I'll hope to hear some progress on that back. Haven't heard anything yet. But the reality is, is we understand the scenario that's happening out there, the severity in which it's occurring, and, you know, also, we see both sides of this coin, right? It's the, hey, you know, we want to have access, hey, we want to have quality of life, right? How do we, how do we, how do we come to terms and merge the two? And the reality is, is it does truly boil down to consistent accountability. And so we're really going to have to work towards gaining that in more than just what's occurring down at Social Security Bar. But that is obviously, right now, very highlighted in some of the situations that have been occurring down there. And so I just, I want you to, all of you to understand and be aware that we are also very aware that Director Fitzgerald is working hard on this with the Department of State Lands and the City of Brookings. And we're working very diligently to try to come to some amicable solution. And I hope we're able to achieve that pre, you know, when summer's hitting, you know, hard, right? And we get a lot of, not only some of the stuff that's happening up there with, you know, individuals, but also with the transient population that tends to migrate up there during the summertime as well. So I'm well aware, and I wish I had better information for you, but we have to gain our lines of communication with our law enforcement arm of the county. We have to gain better communication there so that we can provide better outcomes for everyone else, so.
So you're saying the state corporates aren't going to respond to Social Security Bar anymore? It's going to be more?
Well, they, according to Lieutenant Spiny, this was what I was relayed through the city manager, that that is who they're handing the enforcement off to. So now, that doesn't mean that they're going to stop going up there to do routine checks. It's just I think that they're reaching out for a joint venture on this. So that's what I have on that. Okay?
So my question, my other question is, like, some of the motorhomes look back right up to the river and down through the river.
Right.
What do we do?
Right, so you, you call it in. You call it in, and you take pictures. And...
You're doing it.
No, no, and I know, and I understand that that hasn't resulted in much right now. Your space is not the only space that this is occurring in, obviously.
Right.
And so this is, this is a systemic issue that we have to address as a whole. And so, but I appreciate your question. And I would just continue to tell you to do, continue to do what you have been doing, because that's really the best, as a citizen, as an advocating citizen, that's what I would advocate, is continue to do those things. Commissioner Bay, or no, Commissioner Bay.
I ran eighteen, but...
Andre, so ONC, so, yes, interestingly, so this year, we received ONC payments. In the past, we've elected to take SRS. SRS is no longer coming through. So very fortunate that we have ONC coming. The ONC payment this year was nine, just nine forty, nine forty-four or nine sixty, it was basically nine and a half. And what, now, obviously, I can't speak on behalf of the Budget Committee, but I will provide some clarity on one thing. So our current staffing with PERS and annual increases, the normal annual increases that occur, step increases, I guess we call them, and it's estimated that that nine forty-four will cover exactly that so that we can maintain our current staffing levels. I believe the estimate on that was like nine twenty-seven in increased staffing costs. So it really just created, it provided us the opportunity that we can continue to move forward as we have been, and those will offset all of our increase in staffing costs. Now, that may not be how the Budget Committee decides to utilize that funds, but it's really right there. One thing that should be noted is that with the removal of SRS funds, now, keep in mind, in the past, in last year, we received 1.7 million dollars in SRS funds. That was divided seventy-five, twenty-five between roads and schools. Roads received seventy-five percent of that, and schools received twenty-five percent, and they divide the twenty-five percent based on student population in each district. That number is, we received some funding that counties have the ability to decipher how they want to disperse that. And it's just over $500,000, so it's not 1.7, right? So there are going to be some reductions in the amount going to schools, should the Board elect to divvy up the $500,000. It's going to be considerably less than it was last year that go to roads and schools. But the ONC goes to the general fund. So that's kind of the big change in this year's receipts that come in. What we can expect going forward is with the executive order by President Trump announcing the, getting back into our logging, because currently, we sell a lot of our logs to China, and we buy a lot of our lumber from Canada. And we don't need to do either, right? We have the ability. The ONC lands are strategically placed right now to be what's called our strategic timber reserve, our national strategic timber reserve. It is, it is what President Trump is. It is, it is what President Trump is, that executive order is directed at those lands. That's what those that's what those lands are designed for, and that's what we need to get back into doing. Now, a lot of people who have followed this over the years realize that initially, our O N C lands provided what was called, we were supposed to be harvesting sustainable yield. And sustainable yield within the O N C lands is 1.2 billion board feet annually. Now, in the recent Pacific Northwest Forest Plan put together by B L M, they reduced the capacity within the O N C lands to be harvesting 20% of the available 100%, which turned 1.2 billion board feet annually into 140 to 240 million board feet. And so as we move into next year, I think what we will see with a new Director of B L M and and Secretary of the Interior is a substantial increase in those yields going forward, which in turn will create larger, larger numbers of timber receipts coming into the county. So we haven't seen the fruits of that yet, but I think over the next, specifically the next three years, we will. And once we get that ball rolling, then I think we will, we will see it become more sustainable. One of the arguments that is put against us all the time that I would like to just put out now that is not a true valid argument is that we do not have the capacity to handle that incoming lumber, and that is not true. With our current, with our current lumber manufacturing companies just in southwest Oregon, we have the capacity to take on an additional billion board feet. So that that that's been put out there by different environmental groups that we don't have the capacity, and that is simply not true. We do. And we need to get back to to maximizing that capacity. So I know it's not, it's a long answer to your question, but I hope it helps give some.
I have a question for you, Commissioner. The current O N C timber receipt percentage on the yield, we're, if I'm not mistaken, is currently now set at 25%?
No, it's 50%.
It's 50%.
It's 50%. However, that is our newest litigation.
Okay.
So the original contract is 75% goes to the counties, 25% went back to B L M. In the eighties, the program was working so well that the O N C counties elected, no change in contract, elected to provide B L M with an additional 25%. Well, then they took that as policy. And so now we're going back into court to get it back to a 75, 25 percentage split as originated by the contract. And we feel like we will be successful in doing so. And we may not even have to with the new administration. They may just honor that. So.
Thank you for clarifying that as I, as I, I knew the answer, but I wanted, I wanted you to.
Yeah.
To explain that because you are on the O N C Board. So thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move into consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, I would, I would like to say that I appreciate all the work in getting a lot of these things done and that the C C E C grant for aquatic safety is is a big deal, and we appreciate all the work that Mr. Martinez does to to keep that that department running and efficiently operating off of a lot of grants and and monies like that.
And I'd like to say I had the opportunity yesterday to meet his newest teammate, Declan, who just joined our our aquatic safety team and was listed with the Coast Guard here in Brookings, Oregon. And he's going to be doing a stint with us at the county and working side by side with Luke Martinez. So I just wanted to welcome him to to the team. He's a very nice gentleman.
Yeah. Okay, with that, I will call the question. Commissioner Coker.
Aye.
Commissioner Hollinger.
Yes.
And I as well. Okay, next in, we have a public hearing. This is annexation into the rural fire protection districts. So this is a public hearing before the Board of Commissioners conducted pursuant to O R S 198 dot eight five seven annexation, annexation without election by petition of landowner. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
I will make a motion to open the hearing.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. I will call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I as well. The hearing is now open at 6:55 PM. We have three annexations into the fire protection district, 25 dash oh six, the owner is Stanford into the Gold Beach Wetterburn Rural Fire Protection District, 25 oh seven, owner is Ro into the Ofer Rural Fire Protection District, and 25 oh eight, the owner is Ro, Rotwin.
Ro.
Rotwin. Rotwin. Into the Upper Chaco Rural Fire Protection District. Are any of the owners present and wish to speak? No? Do we have any other public comments? Hearing none? I would ask, do we have?
Yep.
Those three motions?
Yep, we'll start with the first motion. And let's approve or deny petition for annexation to, and it's a B O C annexation number 25 dash zero six. Your motion? To approve or deny?
I was hoping you would make the motion.
Well, I will make the motion.
Motion to.
I will make the motion to approve B O C annexation number 25 dash zero six.
Second. Okay, call the question?
Yes. Yes.
And yes as well.
All right, I would like to make a motion to approve B O C annexation number 25 dash zero seven.
Second. Okay, call the question. Commissioner Coker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hollinger?
Yes.
And yes as well.
And the last, I will make a motion to approve B O C annexation number 25 dash zero eight.
Second. All right, I'll call the question. Commissioner Coker?
Aye.
Commissioner Hollinger?
Yes.
And I as well. Okay, the hearing is now closed at 6:57 PM. What we've been seeing is a lot of annexations into the rural fire districts, especially since the attempt on the the fire map legislation, but it's been repealed, but this is still really good for people to be able to get annexed in for insurance purposes, et cetera, and also for their, obviously, for their safety. But. Okay, next up is discussion action items. And the first one is the the lighting at the county shop. So I asked to to pull this for discussion. Thank you, Director. Have a good day. I asked to pull this in for, because like I said earlier, we have a bid here. We do, we do not have, it's not a current bid, and I'd like them to provide a current bid and with an additional two, and we, and we need three bids. So if we can get current with three bids, but I think as as a board, if we could provide a, an approval not to exceed, once the three bids have been met, then the work can start. So.
Sure.
I can actually move this if you'd like. So I would move that we approve this project not to exceed $17,000 with three confirmed bids.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, I will call for the question.
Aye.
Commissioner Coker? Commissioner Hollinger?
Yes.
And yes as well. Thank you for that. And the next one is discussions from the Oregon State Sheriff's Association presentation.
Yeah. For the past five months, I have attended County College up in Salem, and it is hosted by the Association of Oregon Counties. And for three days every month, I go up to Salem and attend several presentations throughout the course of those three days, hosted by state agencies and other supporting agencies and small businesses that us commissioners have to to deal with on a regular basis. One of the presentation agendas this last week was a presentation from the Executive Director of the Oregon State Sheriff Association, and his name's Tim Svenson. He was a very nice gentleman, gave a great presentation, and his background is he is a retired sheriff from Yamhill County, Oregon. And so he went through, you know, his slides, which gave a history lesson on on sheriffs and how sheriffs were essentially came to be throughout medieval England and made its way, you know, to to America and and have what we we now have today with each county having a sheriff's office. And also within that, he had duties listed of the sheriff. You know, he he talked about how sheriffs and commissioners are supposed to communicate and and follow O R S statutes and participate together in not only contracts, but in following O R S accordingly. A lot of us commissioners throughout these these three days of County College, we record a lot of the presentations because we are fed a gigantic amount of information back to back to back to back for for three long days. So anyway, so I recorded a 45-minute-long presentation that also came with a question and answer session from several commissioners as well as myself at the end. And I talked with Executive Director Svenson, and I gave him a courtesy call and and asked him if I could share the question and answer part of that presentation with the public. And and he said, he said yes. And so I had typed up from from the audio, the the question and answer part of the presentation. And again, if anybody wants a a copy of the recording, we do have it, and we can, we can share that as well. But I just wanted to, I got a few pages written up here, so I'd like to to read these so that, you know, we can.
So is it a transcript?
This is a, this is a transcript of of the question and answer part of the the audio. So the first question was from a a commissioner that attended. And the question, or the her statement and going, leading into a question is, I don't know if this is the appropriate place for this question, but when I'm looking at emergency management or marine enforcement, it's making me think of the budget and that if they're, the commissioners oversee the budget and oversee the sheriff's department funding in their signing contracts for the Marine Board or for different things, should they be signing, should they, as in the sheriff, be signing contracts, or should we, being the commissioners, be signing contracts? The answer from the executive director is, the county, as you guys know, control the dollars, and you guys have a voter responsibility. And I would tell you that contracts should be reviewed by county council and by county commissioners and in conjunction, in partnership with the sheriff's office, and it's a mutual signature thing. There are some sheriffs that feel they can just sign them on their own, and I would say that that's just not a good practice because the county is the one who's bringing in the money, and they're the ones who are going to be on the liability end of the contract, not the sheriff. And then, doing a little bit of further digging, just to bring some validity to to his answer, as as stated in O R S 203010, section three, as commissioners are set forth in to make all necessary contracts. So so Director is, the Director is correct in that. And also, O R S 206345 states, the sheriff has limited authority to enter into limited types of contracts or agreements that bind the county and may only do so jointly with the Board of Commissioners. So I would have to say he was pretty spot on with his assessment of O R S. And I'll get on to the second question here. This was from another commissioner that attended. And his question was, does the sheriff have the authority to determine the scope and type of services their office provides? The Director's answer was, well, that's a good question. Geez, man, I didn't think I was going to get hit with this. So I would say that the sheriff's responsibilities are to provide that public safety. And so if the sheriff has X number of dollars to work with that is handed to him by the county, then the sheriff has the ability to prioritize toward how he's going to spend that money. Now, it's a give and take. O S S A, Oregon State Sheriff's Association, has a wonderful piece that we call in all of our command college training, and that is that relationships are primary, everything else is secondary. And so it comes to that. I would never set my own priorities. I'd always have conversations with the commissioners because I wanted to at least have the ability to say, to listen, I'm including the county in a lot of my decisions. But I'll tell you, like with the Marine Board right now, that is going to be a huge, huge piece. When they cut 30% of the budgets from all 31 programs from across the state, you're going to have county sheriffs now, they're going to have to say, okay, what's my priority based off the money? And how am I going to prioritize that funding for the particular service? And I think there's always an opportunity in a position where you could have that open dialogue. But ultimately, at the end of the day, if the sheriff wants to prioritize traffic enforcement and DUI enforcement, it's like, this is what I want my new patrol deputies to be focusing on. I think that's 100% within his right as they elected chair to provide that public safety. Now, if the county doesn't like that concept, then they just don't fund the traffic safety positions the next year. Move on to the next question. This this question came from me. I said, so one of your slides here, which is the O R S 206010, item number five, it states, the sheriff is to attend upon call the Supreme Court, Court of Appeals, Oregon Tax Court, Circuit Court, Justice Court, or County Court, considering most of us here are commissioners, held within the county and to obey its lawful orders or direction. So I'm curious to know what the Sheriff's Association stance is on that, because County Court, as per O R S 203240, section two, states the Board of Commissioners is the County Court. So if you were in my position and your sheriff didn't show up for eight months under the direction of County Court, how would the Sheriff's Association handle that? And the answer from Director Svenson, well, it's a good thing that Sheriff's Association is a nonprofit and they don't have any control over the 36 sheriffs that we serve. No, it's, yeah, it's, again, it's that same piece of that relationships are primary, and that's the unfortunate part. And it's important for each elected official to have that engagement and that conversation. And it's unfortunate when you get to a position where they just butt heads to a point where not, they're not going to report it. But at the end of the day, if the Board of Commissioners say, hey, we would like you to come talk to us about X, Y, Z, and it's a fund, and it has to do with something that you guys are funding, you guys, as in the commissioners, are well within your means to ask for him, the sheriff, to come and report on it. In our county, we had a department head updates, and the county commissioner and the county administrator would schedule those out very clearly, that I knew exactly when I was going to be there, and there would be times where I'd get called on short notice and I just couldn't go. So I just worked that out because I wasn't available at that time. So I just worked that out because I wasn't available at that time. But most of the time, I knew exactly when I needed to be there, and there was a set time, and I'd go in and report on everything that's going on because it's your guys' money. Where it becomes a very interesting dynamic is that there's a fine line between, hey, we want to know what's going on because we're responsible for this, versus, hey, we want to tell you how to run your office. And I think that's where a lot of the breakdown in communication comes, is a lot of the perception is, oh geez, now the county commissioners are trying to tell me how to run my office. Well, it's not necessarily that they're trying to run your office, they just want to know where their money is going because it is their money. I had a follow-up question as well, and I said, "Then as part of that, you answered my other question, which was great, which was, what kind of oversight and accountability do you, as the Sheriff's Association, hold over the sheriffs, which is none?" And the answer from Director Svenson is, "Yeah, I mean, we are designed for one purpose, and that is to help with policy." I wish I had a follow-up question to that one while he was there. I'll move on to the next, next question from another commissioner that attended county The question is, "Does the Board of Commissioners have any authority to set the number of deputies or any staff within a sheriff's department, or only through budgetary processes?" Executive Svenson's answer, I'm trying to remember exactly. I believe so. If I recall, going back to this, I think it wasn't Klamath County, it was Josephine County versus Daniel, where he, sheriff, sued the county commissioners of Josephine County, saying that, "You can't tell me how many." And the court said, "Well, no, they get to set the budget, and they can set the FTE." I would say that I don't know where the actual legal is because, again, I'm not the attorney. I don't know where the legal part would be and say, "Okay, within that FTE, you're only allowed to have, you're not allowed to have an undersheriff, but I think through the budget process, you have the ability to do that." Because what you would say is, "We're going to give you 30 FTE, but in each one has its own line item for a dollar amount, and if you don't approve the dollar amount for a particular position, then they cannot have that position." So, yeah, I would say that you get to dictate the FTE and somewhat through the budget process more what that would look like. And there's one more question, and this question came from me. "Is the sheriff responsible to enforce their county's personnel rules and collective bargaining agreements within their own department?" And the Executive Director Svenson's answer was, "So, yeah. So you got the county policy, and then you have sheriff's office policy, and the sheriff is always going to have their own policy manual. But I don't believe that the sheriff's office policy can necessarily directly conflict with a county policy. Now, it could maybe enhance similar to other pieces where we can enforce it, and then it comes down to the contract. It really comes down to who, who's signing, who's that contract with, contracts between the county and the sheriff and the labor union. I would say that the sheriff would be obligated to honor the contract. But if it's between the county and the labor union, if the sheriff's not honoring that contract, then I would imagine the labor union at some point would bring that up to the county and file some sort of unfair labor practice," I think is the official term. And that was the end of our question and answering session, but I, I find it interesting and refreshing at the same time that the Sheriff's Association aligns with our stance all along, and along with several items that these questions align with in our declaratory So it was, it was nice to hear their stance on, on a lot of what we are dealing with in our county.
So, question.
Yes.
The declaratory judgment that we've raised, is it asking the court to affirm the Josephine case, or is it affirming another case? Do we know?
So the declaratory judgment references a couple of different cases, and the declaratory judgment is just asked to provide a resolution and a final say as to what is to be followed as per the law.
Yeah, the, the way that the declaratory judgment is written, it's based off of the board order that was, that was written, that basically said, you know, you know, "Hey, sheriff, you can't enter into contracts without county commissioners. You do need to attend meetings upon request."
Right.
You know, it was ORS-based asks, right? So then he refused the board order, so, which then led to the declaratory judgment to get a, the judge to say either, "Yes, sheriff, you need to follow these ORSs as described, and you need to do these things," or, "No, county commissioners, he does not need to do those things." And so that's the, that's the precipice of the declaratory judgment, is based on, the majority of it's based on that the sheriff does not have the authority to sign into, to bind the county into contracts without county commissioners, and that he needs to be showing up to meetings as requested, to provide the information as requested. And that's what a lot of it boils down to.
Well, it's really disturbing and disappointing that for a year, we've been saying pretty much the same thing. Come work with us, show up, let's get the information together that the community needs in order to understand the service delivery with the amount of money that has been granted by the voters to the county for law enforcement. That's been the whole question. And somehow, the conversation has become perverted, and I don't know if that's because we have the highest levels of our law enforcement organizations being duped by consultants that are saying that somehow they have a power that they obviously don't have, that they have standing that they obviously don't have. But I would like, I think it's worth investigating what it is that is the foundation for the position that our senior law enforcement team has taken in this regard. I'm willing to listen, but after listening to what we've seen unfold here, it's a lot of solid talking that they've got to do to bring us back to square one. They can help us work together by simply acknowledging that what the association is saying is precisely what our organizations need to be doing at this time. And I offer that in the strongest comments that I can. I am so disappointed that we have pettifogged the entire county over this matter for a year.
I would agree. And, you know, obviously, it's, it's, it's not done anybody any, any service. So...
I wanted to, again, extend my gratitude to Executive Director Tim Svenson. He came and he gave us a good presentation. He was asked some very difficult questions and put on the spot by several commissioners. And I think our class is 35 commissioners, and they're all following our county very closely because this declaratory judgment will shape every single county and how sheriffs and Board of Commissioners are to be going forward together. So I, again, I wanted to say thank you for answering honestly and openly and taking these tough questions, and I appreciate that.
And the, some clarity on the Josephine v., or Daniels v. Josephine County outcome that was appealed and then found through appeals. That, in a nutshell, in a nutshell, basically found that the county commissioners have the authority to identify the staff within the sheriff's office. Once that is identified, in terms of the FTE and the positions, the Board of Commissioners have the ability to determine the positions within the sheriff's office, and then the sheriff has the ability to then hire, fire, and...
Provide discipline.
Right, to those individuals. And, and then obviously, what's not in conflict is what is, you know, the sheriff has the autonomy to enforce the laws as, as they, as they direct, right? Going forward. So if they want to have an initiative, like I said in earlier, on, you know, DUIs, that's not, that's not, you know, that's not within our, that's not our, that's not our lane, that's not our lane. But, but well within the rights to ask about the services that are being rendered for the money that is being expended by the taxpayers, so.
Well, I read what Patrick has delivered as a terrific bridge between our BOC and our senior-most law enforcement team. We now have what we need as direction in terms of how we come together. We have the rules of the road. There's already admiration, respect, and a great history between the organizations. But now we can set aside what appears to be this cloud of misinformation that has been unfortunately making it very difficult for the organizations to get along. So I'm hopeful that we can, we can clear the air, sit down, look at 25, 26, do our budgets, and move forward delivering the kind of services that the county deserves.
And one thing, too, that I think about as I reflect on, on his presentation as well, is the purpose of the Oregon State Sheriff's Association is to provide policy and instruct on policy and ORS, and to provide training for the sheriff's offices throughout the state of Oregon. They know, have known this dispute in our county has been going on for, going on the better part of a year. Where has the Sheriff's Association been in providing their duty to our sheriff's office and providing that counsel in instructing and educating on the training of policy and the training of ORS? Why, why now? Does he want to answer the questions that obviously favor ORS? It's very black and white, but I would, I would want them to answer that question. Where has their counsel been to our sheriff and his deputies and staff over the last, going on a year?
So maybe it's a three, a triangle that we put together. We get the Sheriff's Association, our, our senior law enforcement here in the county together with the BOC, and trade some notes about what created the train coming off the rails.
Sure.
It sounds like it was completely unnecessary and based on improper information.
Correct. That's all the discussion I have to give, any other?
Uh, no, but I will say that Commissioner Coker, if you do get a chance, going to county college is very, is very much worth the time and investment, so.
Well, I've claimed ever since I took this job that I'm a freshman, so I'm ready to go to school.
Okay, good. Next is public safety update. So I want to just provide a quick public safety, what I have. Received this from the District Attorney's Office, and he just provided me with the referrals that have come through, so it gives some idea of what's, what's been, what's been occurring on, in terms of that front. So since February, so February, March, April, May, there has been, from the, from our sheriff's office, there's been a total of 48 reports to the District Attorney's Office. There are 12 of those are unattended deaths. 10 of those are from not current cases, leaving basically 26, 26 referrals over the last four months coming from the sheriff's, sheriff's office, or six a month, or 1.25 a week. So, you know, to put that in perspective, obviously with staffing and et cetera, those numbers, in comparative to the past, would have been, you know, about a quarter. So that's, that's kind of where that is. It's going to be interesting as we continue to see things move, progress at the end of the year on some of these numbers. Because my first question was, well, is, is that because crime is coming down? So I asked for relative numbers from the other policing agencies, and those agencies are operating pretty steadily as they were this time last year. So it didn't indicate necessarily that, that crime is coming down. But wanted to provide some information on what is, what is occurring, so that's the information I have.
Okay.
Okay. Director of County Operations update. Hello, are you ready for County Operations update?
I'll just give it to you.
Okay.
I've got, I have just one thing to bring forward. I've got, I met with the treasurer regarding the persistent rumors about the American Rescue Plan money from back in '21 and '22 before any of us were around, but we did the research. And so I did a little overview, just to clarify the record, and I'll just read it right now. As part of the state and local fiscal recovery funds program, also known as COVID Money or American Rescue Plan, ARP, the county received two identical installments of $2,226,456. The first was received on May 26, 2021, and the second was received on July 21, 2022. The narrative that some or all of these funds are missing is inaccurate. In fact, all funds were spent legally and accounted for in our county financial system. The event that caused speculation was that although the second installment was received and deposited into the county accounts, it was not shown on the county's report to the United States Treasury prepared and submitted by Dave Barnes in his role as treasurer with the information provided by the finance director at the time. When the county received notification from the Treasury regarding the lack of verification of fund obligation, staff researched, corrected, and resubmitted the report prior to the deadline on April 30th, 2025. So that, that issue just got wrapped up, and there is no missing money, and 3/4's done.
Okay.
All right, that's all I've got.
All right. Well, so I had made mention that I was going to provide some clarity to this scenario after former Treasurer Barnes's comments last, in our last meeting. And so I, I do want to provide some things that were found, and to provide some, some clarity. I know former Treasurer Barnes requested an apology, and I just, I want to, I want to put in perspective some things that we have been trying to work through that were, had, happened under this, the watch of former Treasurer Barnes. So some of the things, as you, you may or may not know, I don't know how closely you followed some of this stuff over the past few years, but it's, to make it just a very simplified word, a mess, right? So what was found in terms of treasury issues during this time period were... So what was found in terms of treasury issues during this time period were outstanding ACH returns that were owed to other agencies, large transfers of funds, $52,510.05 that were recorded in our financial system, but the actual funds were not moved. When discovered, their funds were no longer available to cover the transfer. Actually, that was $952,510.05. Bank fees that were not recorded in the fiscal system for six months, $3.7 million in transfers to accounts other than those recorded in our fiscal system, overdraft charges on our county bank account that should never occur, $601,180.32 in deposits that were not recorded in our fiscal system for up to three months, bank reconciliations and outstanding deposits returned items that were up to two years old, $1.8 million set into account that was not disclosed to county financed, bank rate reconciliations clear with little to no changes at the higher date from, bank reconciliations were clear with little to no changes and up to date, up to the higher of Treasurer Barnes. Post-hire shows adjustments needed due to transactions either not being deposited or recorded in the fiscal system, which ended up being $32 million, $32 million, $31,961 in bank adjustments since March of 2021, nearly no bank adjustments prior to Mr. Barnes being the treasurer. And then I was, went into concerns about districts and the appropriation of monies. And this was a cursory view, basically just looking at a few different districts and getting some response from some districts. But there's, there's a bit of a concerning pattern. So in 2021, there was a misappropriation of distribution of monies going into School District 17C, Brookings School District, at the tune of $143,249.48 that was, then the school district had to, was paying back. So in that, so that was 2021, and, you know, it continued. In 2022, I see this, this, this follow-up email, brought to my attention yesterday that the misapplied forest funds in which you received last year, and then returned once again, added to the December tax distribution and paid out to you. You know, there was no excuses made on this, but again, it was a, a misappropriation of the, of the distribution funds. There was $241,110.58 that were sent to the wrong school district, again, and the, the, the issue there was then rectified, not by sending the money back, but by deducting it from future installments. There were, I received this from the Windchuck Fire Treasurer in looking into some of this information. The treasurer says, "From 2021 to 2024, the distributions were not done on a regular basis, and each included some sort of correction, or multiple corrections, it seemed. I may have deleted some of them as they were frustrating, and I started relying on bank statements for amounts. Please let me know if you would like the follow-up emails." There's another one from the city of Gold Beach, which showed the need for four deposits, but the bank statement only showed that three were posted. And then there was some internal, oh, sorry, there was one more external that came, that was pretty glaring, and this was manufactured Dwelling Park for Currie County distributions. So over the time period of 2022 and 2023, the county had sent them $405,990.63, of which they needed to return, $379,907.45. So in that timeframe, they were actually owed $26,083.17, and we had sent them $405,990.63, at which they paid back after a year of holding on to that and gaining the interest, $379,907.46. And then internally, there were, there's been a, a number of missing deposit receipts. In the Juvenile Department, as of 3/27/23, there was $21,914.50 that were, were not accounted for. And in Parks, there was a total of $60,969.63 that were not accounted for. And since I've been, been informed that, since the, our current treasurer has, has been able to rectify these and get these turnovers put into place. But the point being is, this was a cursory, a cursory examination, and I am, I am not trained in this field to be looking at these things. And if this is something that I can find in a matter of 10 days, I think it is very warranted that we find somebody who is paid to do this, to examine this, because if these were mistakes being made that were acknowledged within our districts and within, and internally, I'm sure we may have some that weren't caught. And not only that, but again, how much did the county lose by sending out monies that would have been gaining interest over many months that were sitting in somebody else's account, then being returned in the dollar amount, not the dollar amount plus interest accrued during that time? So, so point being is, you know, I, I think that, that the commission should vary, that we should be looking at a much deeper investigation into how we, how we've handled the finances over the last four years.
Question on the process for undertaking an inquiry like that. Is that done in public meetings, or is that done in executive sessions? What's procedurally, how we would take the next steps in that?
Well, I think what we'd have to do is, we'd have to go out, and we'd have to agree that we would want to do that kind of level of auditing, and we'd have to go out and get bids on firms to do so, and we'd have to make that all, obviously, public. Now, we, most likely, the findings would be public, you know, unless there was going to be litigation involved of some sort, but I would
Well, actually, actually, Jake, those would still be public, because that's public funds, and the public's entitled to know the disposition of those funds. So, yeah, I, I think you'd just do it, you know, we, you'd have to do the scope, you'd have, you guys would define the scope of what you want to do, then we'll put together an RFP and, and go out for bids, and you can proceed.
Yeah, so.
I, I think we go for it.
I agree.
Well, yeah, I, I think if there's consensus, we can give direction that we start obtaining bids, and then once we get bids, then it obviously would be something that we would bring on to a, for a future agenda to vote on, you know, because I don't even know what the scope of something like this would cost, you know, so.
You have to set your scope before you go out to bid. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
For doing some digging. I know this definitely isn't deep digging yet. And I also want to thanks to our Treasurer Nick Assino for having to uncover, like we said, a gigantic financial mess that was left to, to us, to our citizens. And, I mean, this is, this is exactly what our county has now asked us to do at this, for this Board of Commissioners, is to come out and be transparent and do the investigations and do the auditing of our financials for the past several years. There's been many mistakes, many misappropriations, many misallocations that has cost our county lots of money, and we're finding that money. The, the great thing is numbers don't lie, and a lot of the transactional data and emails don't lie. And we are putting those puzzle pieces together to be transparent with, with our constituents, to keep them in the loop, and to provide that clarity going forward, and to correct our books going forward so that we actually know what we have. And we have a very good team in place right now, who are not only business savvy, but we're financial savvy as well. And I'm, I'm, I'm happy that we're going to come to an agreement here that we should move forward with a deeper investigation and financial audit into this, because what we're finding is very troubling.
And I think your, your comment was correct, is this, is the scope is what drives the bid. And so the scope in which I would recommend to start with is a, essentially, a financial audit from 2020 through the 2024, 2025 budget season. So 2020 through June, June 30 of 2024 would be my suggestion.
Yeah.
So that would be the scope of work.
Do you feel like you've got a consensus that you can proceed?
It's up to you. Do, I don't, do we, is there a consensus to move forward, try, with soliciting for bids?
Yeah, definition of scope, clarify that up.
Yes.
Work with Ted, let's get the, the RFP out and see what it's going to cost to try to uncover how best to proceed next through the audit.
Yeah, let's, let's move forward.
Okay. So with that, that's, that's all I have on that topic. We'll move to elected official updates. Don't see any here.
Not, not, not a current elected official.
You were allowed to speak in meetings before you were elected, before you were a current elected official, sir.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, you're not an elected official any longer, Mr. Barnes, so it wouldn't be appropriate at this time.
Of course not.
Commissioner Coker.
It's my opportunity to talk about staff.
Yeah, it's your, it's your opportunity.
Yeah. So I, I wanted to mention that one of the assignments that I had most recently taken on was to be a part of the Public Safety Coordinating Council, and I have a request of my colleagues here. They immediately came back and said, "We want you to be the vice chair," and I agreed. But they also said that I need to be able to get a alternate to work on the council in the event that I can, I'm unable to perform for whatever reason. So the question would be, who on the council would be willing to step in as an alternate?
I would.
Got it, thank you. Okay. The, the other thing that I wanted to talk about was the assignment that I've got to continue working on, the offshore floating wind turbine efforts of the federal government as they are attempting to industrialize our southern Oregon coast. And I'm coming here tonight to say that our vigilance is absolutely critical right now. I can't tell you how many people have told me, "Well, golly, with the new federal administration that's on board, they have put the matter to rest. They have taken a stake and driven it into the heart of Dracula." Right? But that's wrong. This is still a very lively matter within the bureaucracy called the federal government, especially in BOEM. But equally important, and probably more critical to us, is that this is a matter that's alive and well in the state of Oregon. Even last November, the state of Oregon passed legislation called 4080 that authorized the spending of tons of money and the assignment of a small army of people to go out and create a roadmap, a pathway to how to build, how to operate an industrial-sized energy field in our near, our near-coastal waters. So you can imagine that we have money being spent, people working hard in Oregon, trying to put in anywhere from 100 to 250 towers, monstrous towers, higher than skyscrapers. We're talking over 1,000 feet high. Do you know how wide those things are? And if you include their straps that hold them to the bottom of the ocean? Each one takes up about a mile square, just in order to be planted in our ocean. And you say, "Well, it's going to be out so far in the ocean, we'll never know it." Well, that's not true. They're going to be out maybe 20 miles, something like that, some less, some more. But every night, you can go out and look at the skyline, and you can see those monstrous blades circling around in circles, crossing the night sky with their blinking red lights, all the while ruining our culture and our economy on south coast Oregon. So I'm, I'm so grateful to be working with a lot of the residents here in Currie County, as well as Coos County, trying to push back, but again, my counsel is be vigilant. The people that we're working against know the smell of money, and they are after that money. The global conglomerates that are funding this seldom lose. Get that. They seldom lose. So if we're going to beat them, we've got to be sharper, smarter, more energetic, and more focused than what they can imagine. Give me a call if you want to talk about it. Second thing I want to talk about, any questions?
Can I add to that?
Oh, yeah. My goodness, you know it.
Well, so, on that, on, just on that topic, so the roadmap, the roadmap, that whole process, I got a real good in-depth conversation with them after my email suggesting that you represent Currie County. And it was very apparent to me that the roadmap is, is designed to identify the way in which it would be acceptable to our communities to move forward. That's the goal of the roadmap. And my comments back to them were no different than my comments to the solicitors wanting to go out for the lease. You have to convince the people in our community that what they're going to gain is going to outweigh what they're going to lose. And the biggest problem with the entire process is, number one, what is to be gained is 100% theory, because it has not even been technology that has been developed at the scale in which they intend to do it. So what you're, what you're telling us is, we don't know exactly what you're going to gain, but we do know many of the things that you're going to lose. You're going to lose your sunsets. You're going to lose access to 293 acres of ocean land or ocean floor that you would fish.
293,000 acres.
290,000 acres of ocean floor you will lose access to. You will most likely lose access to the power that is generated, because it will be sold to the highest bidder, which will be California, which was flat-out told to me by the folks who are wanting to do this. So I said, "Look, this gets back to ready, fire, aim." The whole objective of this is that they don't understand what the outcome is going to be, they don't fully understand the impacts in which it will occur, and yet they want the companies that would be solicited to take over the leases to be the ones to tell us what those outcomes are. Well, of course, they're going to be favorable for those companies. Right? So an ecological, an ecological study is to be done by the company, not by the state, not by the federal government, by the company. Of course, it's going to have a favorable outcome. A societal impact study is not even on the table as, 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 as a needed means. So my thing is, what does the roadmap look like? All of those things need to be done prior to, along with a consensus vote by the people who will be directly impacted by this, this, these offshore wind. So you, you get all the studies done. So you get all the studies done, you provide the outcomes of all these studies, and then you allow the citizens to vote. You want a roadmap to getting approval? There's your roadmap. That was my statement. And I think that that's where we should, it should be close to leaving it. And if you can, you can get all those hurdles and you can convince the voters that it's better for them than to not have it? Okay.
Well, just.
100% factual. It has to be real factual data. Yes.
What about adding a workshop?
Sorry?
Or not adding a workshop?
Oh, yeah.
And to remind everybody as well, and to everybody that's listening, was on the last ballot, there was a question, and it was, who is in favor of offshore wind, these offshore windmill farms? The county overwhelmingly shot it down. Overwhelmingly shot it down. And what really disturbs me is that the folks that continue to push this know the outcome of that vote.
Right.
And they're still pushing forward with it. But one of the other things that caught my eye as I was reviewing this as well is this roadmap and the length of this roadmap. Well, it's 48-month roadmap. What happens in 48 months? You have a new, potentially new federal administration, which could swing back the other direction, which was very much in favor of doing this. So everybody needs to keep that in mind as well, that we currently have an administration that is supporting us in not wanting to put out these windmills. However, unless that is a codified law that it cannot be moving forward, it can reverse on the next administration change. So please keep that in mind as well.
You weren't finished. Go ahead.
I had one more. Ken, I've been asked a lot about, what's the timeline for the budget cycle this year? That comes from citizens as well as other departments. What should I tell them?
The budget cycle?
Yeah.
So our first budget meeting will be.
It's next week.
May 28. We will have our, at that point, we will elect the budget officers. We are going to get an instructional piece by our county treasurer to explain to us about how all of our different accounts operate and really try to enhance the budget committee's knowledge of those things. And then, once we have the budget committee all together, then we will set formal calendars so that we can have everybody in the room to look at everybody's calendar and say, we need to get this done by this date. And we move forward.
Do we know what the state date is that is kind of like?
June 30.
June 30?
Has to be done by June 30. Otherwise, we would have to shut down operations until it is done July 1.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanger.
Yeah, I have several things, so it might take a couple minutes.
You already had several things.
You know, that's just how I roll. So I kind of want to just jump back to the previous discussion we had regarding our finances and our ex-treasurer, Dave Barnes. He wanted to speak during the elected officials update. He is not an elected official anymore. He also made a comment that I was allowed to speak during the elected officials update before I was sworn in. However, when I received that information from the previous board, I was, in fact, an elected commissioner-elect. So I want to make sure that gets clarified. Secondly, I kind of wish I was a little bit sharper with this when he wished to have spoken. I think I would have allowed him to speak if he would have offered an apology to the Board of Commissioners and to all of the county constituents for his lack of oversight of the county finances during his tenure. And I think that is something that he should come and give to us, as well as to every citizen in this county, if he wants to have that opportunity to speak.
Can I, one thing, one thing that was glossed over, and I don't know if it's truly understood the severity of, Commissioner Coker, when I came on in 2023, I learned that we were two fiscal years behind in our bank reconciliations. We were still reconciling bank records from 2021 in 2023. And I came in during budget season. It was February, budget was strong on the mind. And I said, how can we move forward with a budget without having the books reconciled for two fiscal years? We are basically creating, we have an imaginary number because we don't know the real one. I was told in a budget meeting by Treasurer Barnes that this was not a big deal until I made it one. And my response was, if it's not a big deal to you, who is it supposed to be a big deal to? And I stand by that. Now, fortunately, the current treasurer and staff have worked diligently and got all of our bank reconciliations up to date. And that was no small feat to go back two years. But that's exactly how you have $32 million in bank adjustments. Because essentially, you essentially are reconciling the books by a bank statement, not by actual transactions, which, again, leads to the need for an audit, an in-depth audit. Some of our policies, and one of the things that our previous finance director, Kena Wolf, was able to do for our county, was update all of our policies, which brought us to a new level. But one of the policies that I think we should have, take note of, that was just absolutely, I could not believe, as coming into this county and what we were facing. We had a cash receipt policy. Cash was not receipted and journaled into the county ledger until after it was deposited in the bank. After it was ledgered in the bank, then it would be journaled into the county, not upon receipt to the county. So the reality is, if cash didn't make it across the street, there was no reconciliation. Those policies have been changed. Those policies have been updated. We have gotten things on the right track. We're moving in the right direction. Our banks, our books are reconciled. But now we're faced with this entirely different thing, which is, how much has been misappropriated to the many districts that we have when just a cursory glance, just an cursory glance, I found $143,000, $241,000, $390,000 on just three of our districts that were misappropriated, that were sent out inappropriately, that should have been sitting in the county's LGIP pool gaining interest for the amount of time that they were sent to somebody else. And that then was county money. And that county money could have been allocated towards operations.
Of course.
How much of that occurred? That's a really, that's a really big question that I, that we, it has to be answered.
Has to be answered, and our constituents want to know the answer of that as well because they've asked us several times to find the answer for them.
So. I apologize going on a bit of a thing, but I just wanted to provide some clarity of the scope that in which we were walking into a budget season that was two fiscal years behind in reconciliations.
How often do they have, you guys have an audit?
Annually.
Okay.
And one of the things that was brought to our attention on the most recent, on the recent audit of that year was that we were in jeopardy of losing our ODOT contracts for roads because of our policies, our finance policies and the lack thereof, literally written into our audit. So we, and if you don't know, our entire road department operates off of state funds with the 50, 30, 20 dispersion of road funds. 50% goes to ODOT, 30 to counties, 20 to cities. We were in jeopardy of losing millions of dollars because of our finance policies and the lack thereof being followed in our treasury. So that was an enormously huge red flag that we had. And fortunately, you know, Director Fitzgerald and Rabia and Finance Director Wolf at the time were able to rectify some of those things and get them corrected to satisfy ODOT. But otherwise, we would have been in jeopardy of losing all those funds.
So, yeah. Well, the entire county should be extremely disappointed in the lack of financial responsibility and oversight that was provided by our previous treasurer. And I'm very grateful now that we have a treasurer in there now that is very sharp and is helping us clean up this mess. To move on from this discussion, I just wanted to give just a brief update. I had sat in on my first fair board meeting last week. So that was good. It was nice to meet everybody on the fair board. And I'll be the first to admit, I don't know much about livestock or forage or anything along those lines, so I'm getting a little bit of an education with that. So it's been fun. But we approved a couple of contractor bids. One was for a new roof on the livestock arena building, which is in dire need. And we also extended a contract to a current contractor doing work there now, which has been, they've been media blasting a lot of the steel structure, priming and painting and resealing that and protecting that steel from our elements of being on the beach. So I had an opportunity to, last week, walk around with our fair manager, Terry Hughes, and she gave me a tour of every nook and cranny of the fair to give me a better understanding of idea of everything that's needed there. And we definitely need to get a capital plan or an infrastructure plan put together there as long as a wish list of what the county would like to have our fairgrounds be represented for, not only fair, but for forage and extended education, but for bringing other events or conferences into our county to continue to stimulate our economy. And there's a lot of great ideas floating around. There's a motivated team behind all of it, and I'm happy to be a part of it and growing it to what it has been in the distant past, but we're going to bring it to a much better future that will benefit everybody here in our county. And I also wanted to state, while I was up in Salem last week, I had an opportunity to also meet with our Senator Brock Smith, as well as our legislative representative, Court Voice. And a couple weeks ago, Court Voice and his team facilitated a veterans' brain injury workshop at our local community college campus here. And they invited me to attend and be a speaker and listen and converse with many of the people that attended there in person and online. It went really well. And I had an opportunity to share a story of my own. And it's not vet-related. I'm not a vet, but I'm a huge supporter of our veteran community here. And for those of you who do not know, I have had in the past some very severe back injuries that have progressed and really put a hindrance to my life for a number of years. And I did a stem cell treatment. And long story short, it was very successful. They used my own body's stem cells. They regrew my spine completely over the course of the last three years. It got rid of my pain, got rid of the damage in my spine, and prevented me from having to do some extensive, very painful surgeries. And I'm very grateful for that. And sharing that story, you know, it led into that workshop of brain injury and pain that our veterans deal with on a very regular basis. So in meeting with Representative Voice last week, and he's been a very strong advocate for our veteran community and very much supports our veterans, and I admire him for that, I admire his team for that very much, though, because they are doing good work for our veterans. He wanted to work on a bill with me during next legislative session to provide stem cell treatments to our veterans, which is a big deal. They're going to pass a legislative bill this year for hyperbaric chamber treatments for our veterans, which is huge for PTSD and healing a lot of mental and brain trauma, which is great. And I talked with them, you know, in pretty good depth about stem cell treatment and therapy and how it can, for one, remove our veterans' pain without surgeries. It can remove drug dependency, prescription dependency to cover up their pain, which has led into substance abuse, which leads into further mental illness and disease, which then can lead them into a pathway to homelessness and trouble. But then it can also help, on the other side, with reducing suicide as well within our veteran community. Because I could tell you from firsthand experience, extreme chronic pain can make your brain do some funny things and think some dark thoughts. And so anything that we can do to take advantage of advanced technology in order to help heal our veterans and everybody, for that matter, I think would be a gigantic win for all of us and for our healthcare system and for the VA system together. So I am very excited to start working on this bill with Representative Voice and to draft it. And we have a whole year to work together on it and to reach out to several other experts in the field, as well as the doctors that invented these therapies, which were the doctors that performed my procedures on me and that were able to heal me and give me a second lease at life. So it's great news. I'm very thankful. I'm very happy about that. And I'll continue to keep you posted on progress. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Peter.
Yes, thank you. With that, I don't have a lot to add. Thank you for all you did this week and.
Yeah, of course. And thank you as well. Bless you.
Continue to do. And our next meeting will be a budget meeting next week, which I anticipate will be, it's going to be an interesting time and an interesting budget year. But I think the one thing that we can say is that this year we did budget. We budgeted with the means, within the means in which we had, which is sustainable. Fortunately, with the ONC monies, I think we're going to be able to, you know, we're going to be able to make the changes necessary to increase staffing costs so that we have a status quo-looking budget going forward, which is promising. And going into this year, something I'd just remind to keep you guys on your radar is that our county plan was a five-year plan. It was 2020 to 2025. is that our, our county plan was a five-year plan, it was 2020 to 2025. And I feel that once we get through budget, I think that it would be prudent of us to examine that, that plan, identify the areas in which we have achieved the goals and the areas in which we have not, and begin formulating the next five-year county plan so that we can prepare the county going forward, and also our predecessors. Because I will tell you, when I came in in 2023, and the first thing that I found was our plan, and I read it, it gave me some guidance. It gave me an outline of what was previously identified as needs, which I think is something we have to continue moving forward with. So something to keep on your radar, obviously, as soon as we get done with the, the budget. So with that, hearing nothing further, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 8:11. Thank you.